Meeting to order. It's seven o'clock. Cover set. Agenda considerations, reserve for changes in agenda items in your order. You're not changing anything. Comments and questions coming the follow up. Alright, so this is our commission discussion of potential items for future updates to claim the common regulations supplement.
I will start with a great big, I'm sorry, because we just finished supplement forty-eight, and here I am like forty-nine. But, there are some things that just didn't make the cut last time, that have still continued to sort of be a problem, they've just come up, either just continually in our office, or, and some of them are small and some of them are big, as you've seen, so, I know we're gonna be diving into the town plan, and very soon. So, I thought, we'll just kick these off and see what you do with them, you could say yes, no, maybe, give us something, let's just plow through them, get them done, so we'll see, this is, this is an exploratory meeting, this is not ready for adoption, this is not, you don't have to love anything, you could hate it, you could even be like, no, not anytime soon, take it, come back with us in three years on this, Kathy Ann, I don't know, or you could just say, look, let's not boil the ocean, let's, yeah, I like the idea, find some language, come back, so let's feel these out as we go. And I did take a few, I had more, Rich knows I had more, he's probably like, where are those other things we talked about? I did start to feel bad that it was really thick, so I did take a few things off that I had talked to him about, and I can, and I can either bring them back, I'll connect with Rich again after this and see if he wants me to bring them back, or, it just started to feel really heavy, as I started to write them, I'm like, this is a lot, this is more than I thought it was, I do that a lot, I bite off a lot, and then I'm like, starting to chew on it, and I'm like, okay, this is a lot. So I tried to remove the two things that felt a little less pressing, but there may be more, again, I'll connect with Rich after and see how he feels about them. Okay, so, wanna dive right in? Yeah? Okay. Yeah, so, so the approach this time is a little different than we've talked about regulations in the past, just because of the time limit that we have with the regulations. Normally, we'd, you know, we'd sort of, you know, talk a lot about the theory of things, and then we'd work through a lot before we'd even get to language, just knowing how busy you guys are gonna be, I took a leap, I'm starting to craft language earlier than I normally do, you don't have to love it, we can still change it, none of this is meant to make you feel married to any of it, but I am bringing you language earlier than usual, because we have something to respond to, and you can work from there, okay? So I'm gonna start little, we're gonna work our way up. Medical office, there's a lot of text here, but really, it just boils down to a very simple thing. Did you have a, you look like you wanted to say something, do you want me to stop?
No, 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 no.
So medical office, very small thing, people when they come in, often will talk to us about why they think they are or are not a medical office, and usually because it either benefits them or hurts them in some way, medical office can be an advantage, because it might require more parking, or not require more parking, or, depending on what the situation is that they're moving into, and so people will often try to be or not be, and our definition, as you can see, is not bad, actually, but it could be better. And there's a lot, there's a, there's a lot of things that are sort of in the gray area, or on the fringe area of what a medical office could be, people who perform something that is sort of bodily related, but whether or not it's medical, the provider might see it as medical, but their insurance company may not, so this is an effort to just be as predictable as possible, we're not trying to judge, we're not trying to say that your degree is not worth anything, or that your experience or practice is not good or valuable, or, it's just to try to be consistent and predictable, so. Try, these are examples, this is not something that would end up in a regulation, but just try to basically categorize things a little bit better, so that there is a better understanding of how we might see a medical office. Now, what you might catch on to here is that basically, generally, if medical insurance covers it, probably a medical use. Not that medical insurance will never cover certain other things, some people have really good insurance and can get acupuncture, or nutrition counseling, or something like that covered. So, it's, it's not gonna be perfect, but, so, Emily and our office worked on some of this, did some research onto what some of other offices are using, this is just background for you, I'm gonna skip by it in the interest of time, and here's the red line version. Set of medical professionals, because, what's a medical professional if we haven't defined medical? Licensed healthcare practitioner, we added in some examples, and then added in a sentence at the end, to say it does not typically include massage therapy, energy work, touch professionals, I learned all kinds of words in my research of this, so touch professionals might be something like Ricky, or, there's all kinds of other things out there that I've never experienced, but may, now that I've read about it. Unless, again, specialized healthcare training and licensure is required, and healthcare insurance is typically accepted, so, that's what I'm trying to do there.
I would want them licensed, I know, I think you have that up there, but that they be licensed.
Do you think it's covered there, or do you, do you want different language?
Well, I mean, when you say counseling services, I mean, do you mean a licensed mental health counselor?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you want that, you want more clarity in that part?
Yeah.
Okay, let me.
And the only other thing I wrote down was just the impact of AI on medical practice, I mean, in terms of, I don't, I do wonder if people are gonna be going to doctors' offices, they will, but there's also gonna be telemedicine, and I'm just wondering, we don't need to cover that, right?
Oh, the AI thing?
Or telemedicine, because I, I think, you know.
Well, you know, it's funny, you have, where my pen is, you have very interesting timing on that, because I have a college-age son, college attending son, who just did a really fascinating telemedicine just last week for the first time, unlike anything I've ever heard of, so he's, he's at a college where all the healthcare is included as part of tuition, fascinating, I didn't even know how cool this was until I didn't get a bill, and, so he had a cold, he had like, I don't know, turns out it was bronchitis, so he goes to the healthcare clinic on campus, right? And there's a nurse practitioner who's on staff, so he sees the nurse practitioner, so there is somebody on staff who's licensed, and I looked it up, because I was fascinated by this, because I had no idea what he was describing, you know, because he's a twenty-year-old boy who gives me words like, cool, person, stethoscope, so I looked up videos of this. So he goes, and the person who's in the room calls up an MD in Manhattan, and there's like this specialized machinery, like, have you, have you done this? It's not just like a Zoom call.
I haven't done it, but I've seen it.
It's fascinating, so like, they actually attach a machine to him, like, attach it to him, and the person who's in Manhattan can listen to his lungs from Manhattan, like, so, it's like telehealth, but like, I guess like, I don't know, it's like a real person, but not there, so I guess what I'm saying is I would call both sides of that still medical office, because there's still like a health practitioner on both ends, it just saves them from having to keep a, a medical doctor who is paid more, probably, on staff.
But they could do it from their home, too, right?
Yeah.
And that they wouldn't need anything to access a doctor in Manhattan, they could just do that from their home.
I would assume so.
Okay, I would assume so, too.
Yeah.
I don't know.
I assume this person wasn't, I didn't ask, but, fascinating, technology is amazing. But yeah, it's just.
You think, Wendy, you're in healthcare.
I, I, the whole AI thing is still, like, so fuzzy, so maybe I don't really quite.
But does this sound good?
But as far as like, the planning commission is concerned, I hope, I, I mean, to me, it's a physical building, opposed to someone being in Manhattan, you know what I mean? So, I mean, I'm sure that the college has that included in there.
Yeah. 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 So yeah, I could look at the counseling services part of this if you want, like, life, because counseling, you're right, is, is pretty big.
Yeah.
But you're looking for licensed counseling services, yeah.
And acupuncture, and all that, I mean, is that?
I don't know much about it, I mean.
Is there licensing for that, for acupuncture?
Yeah, okay. Is it always licensed?
Yeah.
They do, or don't?
They do.
They do?
Yeah.
Okay, and specialized training, right, I mean, you can't, I can't just go do that tomorrow. I mean, not that massage therapy is not like specialized training, but, that's more of a personal service, I think, generally. Yeah, the good ones are, yeah. Yeah. But there are places that exist that are just, sorry, Charlie, can you go? That are just.
Of course, it is on subject to change, because like.
Are you on, Wendy?
Now, is to, like, we're, a lot of these certificate of needs are now at these off-site areas for different places, so.
Yeah.
It's a good thing we're actually, we're visiting, are visiting this now, because it's not to change, I think.
You think?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. And like I said, it hasn't been a huge issue, but it comes up frequently, and usually, and I just wanna be fair, I just wanna be predictable, people are usually very good and nice about it, but, I don't wanna tell one person of the same thing that they are, and then, you know, two weeks later, somebody else on staff makes a different decision, and, just because we don't have something to look at that's predictable, so, that's the goal here. Alright, moving on. Another one that's not a big deal, but I've had it flagged in my book for a long time, so funny enough, temporary fencing is not allowed, except for erosion control and snow control. So we've had some people who've come in who are like, we had actually a resident come in who was building like a pool, and while it was under construction, the company wanted to put a big fence around it, because there was a giant hole in the ground, and he was above and beyond and wanting to do everything right, and he's like, do I need a permit to put the fence around the pool? And we're like, looking at this, we're like, you can't even technically put a temporary fence around your pool, you have to get a permit for a permanent fence, and then take it down or something, I don't know, so anyway, it flagged to our, it just flagged to us that you cannot have a temporary fence for construction, so, this is just meant to close that little loophole, and also, temporary fencing for construction tends to be a little bit taller than a residential fence, so what I've drafted here just gives you a little bit extra height for construction fencing, and makes it clear that it's only onsite during the construction period. And, yeah. Thoughts?
Oh yeah, sure.
Do pools, are we, do we require fences around pools, permanent fences around pools?
You do, yeah, so four-foot-high fence, but a four-foot-high fence does not require a permit, well, anything four feet and under does not require a permit, but they wanted a taller one while it was under construction, because it was a really big hole.
So does the definition of temporary, is that determined by the job, like, how long is temporary?
Well, you know, it's, so they're each, they're each specific to the type, so like erosion prevention and sedimentation control, if you get, if you go to 210, it'll say just while the construction is ongoing, snow control says November first through May, so you can't have up outside of that, and then construction fencing, what I put here is only onsite during the construction period, so, you gotta take it down when you're done doing the construction. But if you guys have any thoughts on the length, or even the, the extra two feet, again, I was just trying to put stuff to have you respond to it, I will not be offended in any way, because I am starting with language earlier.
I just were thinking about the use, like, the height would determine how high the fence would need to be, you know, why, what's the difference between a six-foot fence and a four-foot fence?
You mean in term, generally in terms of permitting? Or this construction fencing?
In terms of this, in terms of.
Oh, well, this is eight feet, I think generally it's considered a little less scalable.
I see, okay, so it's all eight feet for temporary fencing?
Just for the construction fencing.
Just for the construction, okay. Okay, sorry, I have so many questions.
This gets all new, we haven't talked about any of this before. Thoughts, changes?
Looks good.
Okay, I'll keep going, then. Alright, food trucks, food trucks has been, if anybody's visited my office, it's been on my whiteboard for four years, finally pulling it off my whiteboard, we do not have good standards in our regulations for food trucks, we sort of monitor them in two ways, so we do have a definition for a mobile food unit, you can read it here, I don't read it all to you, but, couple things that stand out to me when you read this, there are a lot of kind of soft language parts of this, usually seasonally, but it doesn't say it has to be, capable of being driven or towed offsite, but it doesn't say it has to be, without much difficulty, I don't know how we're defining much difficulty, customarily consumed off, so there's just a lot of soft language, and the DRB hates soft language. Customarily operated between ten and nine, but is that, is that hard, is that soft? What does that mean, can one truck be open earlier than ten, or later than nine, but another one cannot? So again, these, this is all very, very soft language, because it, it's not predictable, and it allows a lot of flexibility in terms of like, I should, flexibility's not the problem, it allows a lot of disparity between what one is permitted to do and the next is not, and we've seen that actually happen, so a lot of these are proved with site plans, and none of them look the same, we see approvals that have twenty-five conditions on them, and we see others that have none, and rightfully so, the owners of these trucks complain to us, so, this is an attempt to get more predictable, more fair, more consistent, let's just say what we wanna say, and since you guys are the writers of the regulations, let's say what you wanna say, and not leave it up to the DRB to have to guess every time, and I've read a lot of decisions on food trucks, and like I said, they're all over the place, and some of them I just can't understand, not that I disagree with them, but just because some of them, I'm like, where did it, where did this come from, like, one of them's like, yep, you have to be offsite by 6:00 PM every night, well, why six? You want them to start the dinner hour, but not finish it? You know, and others say, you can have a deck, but you can't, it can't be bigger than six by six, okay, well, what's the point of a six by six deck, so somebody could stand on it, but not more than four people can stand on it, so a lot of it, just, I don't really understand, it's just so random.
That's, that's us doing this.
No, that's the DRB.
That's what I mean.
Because there's site plans.
That's the town.
It's the town.
That's the DRB, and.
And some of them date back to like the nineteen eighties, so I'm not blaming anybody.
No, I get that part, I understand that, but the thing is, is that, these regs are so soft that we allowed them to start making decisions, and we don't have anything that's uniform for all trucks.
Right.
That's what I'm looking at.
Yeah.
The first thing I pick out is the hours of operation.
Yeah.
I would think they'd be just like a restaurant, what do we do with restaurants? Do we pick and choose, or do they all have twenty-four hours, six to twelve, or do we decide on where they're sitting? You don't know? I don't know.
Well, you guys got rid of, well, you, the only time you had with restaurants.
Alcohol restriction.
Was the alcohol restriction.
Yep.
And now that's gone.
I mean, a good example is the hours, because if you're running a breakfast truck, ten in the morning's kind of late in the day.
Yeah, I mean, some flexibility is good if a food truck is sharing space with another use, so let's just pretend you've got an existing grocery store, right, or even a big box store, like a Home Depot, we don't have a Home Depot in Colchester, so it's okay to pick on them, so if you get a big box store and the food truck, somebody wants to have a food truck at the other end of the parking lot, you might care about hours of operation, because that's gonna affect the traffic flows in and out of there, maybe you don't want that food truck open after the business is closed, so it's not necessarily that you want a specific hour, but you might wanna say, the food truck shall not be opened after the business is closed, I don't know.
It shouldn't not be also tied to the business where they're parking it?
Right.
That should be their decision in a sense.
The business's decision?
To a degree, I mean, if they're using their space, if it's a, if it's an allowed use, or if it's a conditional use, based on that.
Yes, until the business is like.
Yeah.
Alright, now we're done.
We're all just going home.
I just wanna say that I would have food trucks all over Colchester, I would, I would have them at Airport Park, the Causeway, Bayside, the Marinas, Bear Beach, the Rec Center, Airport Park, I would have them everywhere, because I feel like it's a way for the community with picnic tables, so people could sit and eat, and talk to one another, it just make, and plus, I think it's a huge revenue source, you know, for, for the town.
But let me riddle you this.
Okay, can I just, okay, and also the farm, like, it, does, does this include farms, being able to have a food truck?
Well, see, that's the other thing, and we don't make a big deal out of it right now, but most, most places, I shouldn't say most, many places that have food trucks that come right now don't get any permits whatsoever, and while the advantage of that is, like, especially if it's sort of a last-minute thing, you're not getting bogged down in paperwork, the disadvantage is, if something is wildly successful, which we want it to be, we have no oversight of access, traffic flow, which, which can really get out of hand, we think in our head a lot of times of these food trucks that are placed really well, that are in great locations, that are serving people really well, but sometimes they are in locations where traffic is backing up, or there's not enough parking, or it's just people are having to cross a busy road to get to it, or, there are situations where it's not planned well, and that's why you want a review process, so that somebody who's trained to look for things can say, hey, this is not a great spot, or you should reposition this way, because you're gonna have people who are circling right in front of where all the pedestrians are standing, there are things that we can look for, and a lot of times it's suggestions, it's not a no. So, the intent of all this, I guess, to read to your point, is to, to get to yes as often as possible, as quickly as possible, while also making sure that the things we need to look out for are looked out for. That's the real goal. The other thing to keep in mind with food trucks is that sometimes something that looks like a food truck, that starts to have a deck, and fourteen walk-in coolers, and an umbrella, and a fixed this and that, is no longer a food truck, and if it isn't a place where you wouldn't have otherwise allowed a restaurant or a building, but that you would have allowed a mobile food unit, we have to be cautious of that, too.
There's one right on Route fifteen right now, Kim's Food Truck, it is a monster mobile.
Wait, are you talking about the one in Jericho?
Yeah.
Oh, Kate's?
The big blue Kate's, that's.
Yeah, I was gonna bring that one up.
So, yeah, there you go, so that's a good example of how far that we wanna let it go, I guess, really, you could hook to it, move it, move it, she's got a great deck, and lots of furniture, and assuming busy.
Tree walk-in chillers, yeah.
Got it all.
I think the town sued them, I'm not sure all the details, but, yeah, but I think that's the, that is the example, because they did call themselves a food truck, and they're kind of just like a seasonal.
Yeah, we don't differentiate from.
They're a seasonal.
Yeah.
Uh, what do we call them, we had a lot of them where I grew up, they were really just like, like food stands, like dairy bars, we called them, do you guys have dairy bars here? We always called them dairy bars, we had a ton of them where I, where I grew up, they served ice cream, but they were also like, they were seasonal, they served food, but they were not mobile. Why they call them dairy bars?
Well, for the, for Jericho, it'd be the difference between Kate's, and whatever that Joe's snack bar is, just as you're going up the hill on the left.
They're pretty much the same thing.
The same idea, nobody's moving, they're seasonal.
Yeah, but that's different than like a Beanzy's bus.
Right.
Which is even more different than, say, the food truck that comes to San Mazzas on Wednesday nights.
Versus one that gets, it's not a food truck, it's a food trailer, but it's still pretty temporary, you're just hauling it in, set up and go.
Yeah, or, if you go through Essex, there's the, the sausage shack at the.
Yeah, good example.
Yeah, you know, he even drives that off to go to events.
Yeah.
You know, a couple times a week, it's missing.
So do we determine location, or can someone say, I'd like to set up at the Rec Center, I'd like to set up at the Bolt Launch?
So, I think what, you know, what we're gonna eventually propose to you, is that there's really, so, I'm scrolling down here, there's really two different categories that I would suggest you use, there's the mobile peddlers, who mostly are like driving around, who, who are not spending more than a couple days in any given place, they're not trying to be fixed anywhere for any length of time, you know, I think those are your like, you know, the Elgato truck or something's probably a good example, they're never parked someplace for more than a day or two, right? They're not trying to find a spot that they, they sell from, and I would call them like a mobile peddler, not that they go door-to-door like an ice cream truck, that's a true mobile peddler, you know, your ice cream truck, and then you've got sort of that middle ground, and then you have the people who are trying to be fixed for some amount of time, and where you have to really take into account, you know, the standards that are associated with that, those are the people who are gonna set up the picnic tables and stuff, somebody who's there for an event, they're not gonna be putting out the picnic tables, and the chairs, and the trash cans, and the umbrellas, and, and all of that, so I guess there's like three categories, so. So, um, so we'll work with you to get through those, you know, what are those three categories? What do you want to see out of all three of them? How do we make the permitting of them easier? Because we want people to permit them. We don't want people to not, because then we're missing things, but we understand there's a reason people don't. It can take, especially if a peddler's permit right now goes to the select board. And at certain times of the year, that can take over a month to get an approval. Just by virtue of when meetings are held. And then if you have to go to the DRB for a site plan, you decide in April you want to run your food truck, you think you're going to open in May? You're not. So we want to figure out a way that we can maybe create some administrative site plans if you have clear standards. You know, so how does this work? How do we make this easier? But to do that, you have, you have to make the standards as clear as possible upfront because if there's anything that has to be decided, you never want staff doing that, you don't want staff making those decisions. That's what a volunteer board is for, to make those decisions.
But out of those three categories, I think the only people that are going to come in for a permit are the ones that are looking for semi-permanent location.
Well, hopefully...
Nobody's going to be drawing a permit if they're doing a wedding in somebody's backyard, you know what I mean?
You'd be surprised, actually.
Really?
It's funny. Like, it's funny with the people who do. I think we probably get like 20 from St. Mike's every summer for like catering permit. But yeah, no, you're right overall, though.
Because like I said, if somebody pops up in the, you know, in a park for a weekend because there's a soccer tournament or a marathon that's happening, I mean, they're not going to pull a permit, which is not going to happen.
Yeah.
You know, and there's really no way to enforce it either.
Yeah. I'm, I'm more concerned about the people who are, again, potentially impacting those public safety, you know, things.
Traffic.
Traffic, access, pedestrian circulation especially. So what do you think? Do you want to take this on?
Would you want designated areas first? You know, so we're not being so ambiguous, like someone coming up with something and then you have to rethink some of the things again?
But I think it's a conditional permit, except for the commercial district now, so you have to pretty much go in front of the DRB to get an approval on it regardless. So it's a case-by-case. So I think if you're defining the food truck for, like, when the permit is needed, I think it should be based on like length of time for an event, because otherwise if it's, you're just categorizing it and, you know, you've got a mobile food truck that's, you know, rotating events every weekend, there's no way you can permit them. I mean, you would be out of business waiting for an approval. So you have to have a semi-permanent, and then that automatically falls under the A1 table, and then you have your conditional uses, or if it's a permitted use, which is a commercial district only. And it excludes every residential district on top of that, so... I mean, just assign something for the length of time, I guess, where the permit is needed, and then we'll drop it in that category, just to simplify it.
I mean, my initial thoughts, which I haven't got into yet, is that, you know, you might issue a permit for a calendar year at a time, and you might, you know, you'd address all of these things.
How would you issue a permit for essentially a business to be operating in an area where it's not a permissible use? That's kind of like, to a certain degree, if you did that.
You mean like, um...
If you issued a permit for like a seasonal permit for a food truck, and they start operating in a district where it's not a permissible use because you issued them a permit. So I think that's where it kind of like becomes the whole...
So my first question to you would be, would you change this chart here?
I don't think so.
Thirty is a chart.
Because the chart's pretty much allowing it in commercial use, which is fine.
And that's not proposed, this is existing, just to be clear.
Yeah, so the question is, you have a weekend,
You have a wedding, yeah.
wedding, something, you have a truck roll in, does its thing and rolls out. That would become a time issue. We allow you 24 hours.
I mean, generally speaking, most things in Colchester, if you do them for less than 10 days, oh, this is very general, don't anyone quote me on this, are considered temporary and don't need permits. Generally, you know, if you have a, you have a big old barn and you want to host nine weddings a year in it, you can do that. And you are not an event facility. So 10 is like the magic number for when you cross from temporary. If you want to erect one of those, um, big temporary portable garage thing with, you know, a tarp on the top and metal rods, and you want to leave it up for nine days, you're not violating anything. So, yeah, if you have a food truck in your backyard for a wedding, there's no need for anything like that. If you sell ice cream and you drive around town nine days, you're probably fine, too. So nine days is sort of like a magic number, generally.
What's the definition of the restaurant? Do we have that?
Of a restaurant?
Yeah.
Just approved at last.
Yeah, no, no, well, yeah, but just to, just to compare it. Because I mean, I think if the food truck is stationary for more than X amount of time, which is 10 days, then it must just follow the, the bylaws of like the restaurant definition, you know, with the permitting and everything else, just to kind of...
Is that nine days a year?
Yes. Calendar year usually.
No, that's why it's, it's good. They can get in, get out, and do their thing. But then they step to the next level.
If they want, if they want.
If they want to. So if they want to park it down here off Bayside, now we're, now we have some serious, we should have a serious look. But we should not get so complicated that we're making them jump through all these hoops where they finally say, "No, we're not going to do it."
Right.
We do not have a food truck down there, and there's a reason for that. There's no doubt. I mean, we did, many years ago, it got complicated, and nobody's ever stepped up again.
I mean, that particular site is challenging because there was a DRB decision that was issued that has some complicating conditions.
Right, but for...
But that's part of the, what's inconsistent.
Exactly.
The same conditions that apply to that site don't apply to other sites.
Right. That's, that's hopefully we can fix something like that, that's what I think. Because I had, I had, it's been food down there for 100 years and then we've had anything for...
So many people miss it.
Yeah, absolutely, I do.
So you can have something down there, you're just going to follow the 15 rules that were written for it.
Yeah, I get that.
So I guess if I'm going to summarize this, there's quite a bit of work to do, mostly on our end, but still a lot on your end, because there's a lot of policy decisions to make. This is one where we're, we're both going to have to put a lot of weight. Usually when I come to you, I'm like, I try to tell you how much is in your bucket and how much is in our bucket.
Yeah.
This is like both buckets.
I think, I think for our side, at least this part of it, that part of it, up there for conditional, non-conditional, all that, that part looks good. Because it is a temporary deal. So we're looking pretty good where we allow them. So I don't think we have a problem there, but we definitely get into the, yeah, more specifics.
Yeah, I think if you just outline like when they need to go see the DRB for a permit after 10 days or whatever, and then just let the, each site be different for the...
So you want to get into the decking, chairs, waste water?
I want to be predictable. I mean, you, I think you want to get into that because people are going to ask.
Yeah, I, I...
They're going to say, "Am I allowed to have a deck?"
Yeah.
And I think if you, if you want to simplify the process, you need to sort of have a rule up front that says, "No decks are allowed." I'm making that up, you could say all decks are allowed, or only certain decks are allowed. It's your call. Seating is allowed, but only up to 16 seats. Anything more, you start to get really excessive. I'm making up numbers, but...
Sure.
So I would at least address all of these things. How you address them is going to be a policy call that, that you make, but I think you want to address all of this in a regulation upfront and not leave it unpredictable. Anybody coming in, you know, an attorney, a land use attorney once told me, anybody coming in for a permit should have an idea before they even walk into an office as to whether or not it will be approved or not. If your regulation doesn't give them a good idea of that, your regulation is not good. And I wholeheartedly agree with that. They should not have to guess.
Yeah, and nice food trucks, if we do it right, food truck can be $150,000, I mean, in this day and age. Get something nice, they've got a big investment, they want to do it right, and they want to come in and get it done without jumping through too many hoops. I get that.
Plus, I think, you know, again, the Heritage Project, you know, talked about bringing tourism to the bay. I mean, I mean, there are other areas in Colchester and stuff, but I'm, you know, I just am kind of looking at the outcome, you know, where people are coming and having dinner or meeting people for a drink or whatever outside. How do we get to that point, that it's safe and it doesn't block traffic and people can cross the street? But how do we create an environment where kind of it's more fun? You know, there's more fun and people would stay longer. They wouldn't hop in their cars and drive to Burlington to, you know, get something to eat.
All right, so you, you want to? Yes? No? Don't bring it back? Bring it back?
All good.
All right, I'm just coming back then. All right, so that's one we did not develop a lot of language on, but there's a couple surrounding towns that actually do a pretty good job with it. So this might be one where we don't reinvent the wheel, we bring you something that we can adjust. Okay. You guys remember this one?
Yep.
Vladimir, you remember this one?
Yep.
Okay, so, um, I've been thinking about this one a lot since then. Automobile sales on residential property. So you guys made a decision with the request that was in front of you. And that's all you were supposed to do. The request in front of you was to reconsider regulations, that was a very specific request. But, you know, it sort of did open my eyes to like, the regulation still was kind of vague, right? And so there was a room full of people, if you remember, that night, who were like, "You got to do something about this, this is..." And so, um, so it went on my whiteboard, and I've been thinking about it. And I've talked to Rich about it a little bit and some other folks. And this is just a starting point, but... So you know the existing language says, "You reach the threshold of automobile sales if you sell or lease two or more automobiles." Dot, 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 I don't know. In a year, in a month, in a millennium? I don't know. Attorneys would have a field day with this. You could probably make some reasonable arguments, but the courts don't do reasonable. So let's take an opportunity to talk about it. And there was a lot of conversation that night, a lot of great conversation. I took some notes, there was conversation even amongst Board of Commission members, who, you started to have this conversation about, okay, what is reasonable? What, what is a, what is a residential sale? What does that even mean? And you talked less about what was actually written here and what it should say, and that's what you guys are supposed to do. What should it say? Because you're the planning commission, you get to decide what it should say. So, um, throw the two out the window, and let's talk about what you think it should say. Just a starting point, you don't have to like it. So, but I did hear somebody say that night, okay, "If I own a house and I have a family and like my car dies and I need a new Subaru and, but my, you know, my 16-year-old, you know, he bought this junker and I couldn't believe it, brought it home, we're going to get rid of it, and we also have a dirt bike and that's going for sale, too." What is your average family, household, sell in a given year? Is it less than two? Because that's what's written right now. As soon as you sell two, so if mom and dad or, you know, John and his roommate both sell cars on their front lawn, they are automobile sales under the current definition. As soon as you and your roommate both sell a car. So I'm not sure that even you like to. So what's the right number? I don't know, putting something out here for you. And then I added in a whole extra language about what the timeframe is for you to respond to. It's a whole lot here for you to chew on, in a short little paragraph. So I have in here engaged in the, I added advertising for sale, and I did this for a reason, because some people say, well, I, I've actually heard this, "I don't actually sell it right there, we do the business. I go to them, I bring them the car, they give me the money at their house. I deliver it, that's where the sale takes place." I hear it all. So that's why I included the advertising for sale. If you've got five cars for sale on your, listed for sale on your property, I don't really care where you take their money.
That didn't seem to be the argument.
That was not the argument made that night, but it is one that I have heard in my office. So that's why that's included there. So four or more means that you get three. Keep that in mind before you cross into automobile sales. Registered or unregistered, because that came up a lot, too. "They're not registered, it doesn't matter," or "They are registered, they're all registered, it doesn't matter." So registered or unregistered, you're still selling vehicles. In the same calendar year. I'm not, I, I, none of us can figure out whether you sold your first one in April and the next one wasn't until October, and I'm not counting 12 months for every person out there. We're just going to do a calendar year. Makes things so much easier. And then this last one is another one. I didn't put a sign on it, it doesn't count as for sale. Well, when you have 25 of them listed on Craigslist or Facebook Marketplace, they're still for sale whether or not the red sign went on it or not. Respond to thoughts.
This one tipped, I'm torn, because I feel like the person has the right to sell their cars. But that night, it was the impact on the neighborhood, you know, cars coming in and people coming in and people they didn't know coming into their neighborhood. So for me, it's like, what are the, you know, kind of, what would most people think are appropriate levels for a person to sell their cars and still respect the neighborhood? You know, that it doesn't change really a lot of the character of the neighborhood. That's why I was kind of torn, even with the last one.
So even if you didn't live in a neighborhood, let me riddle you this. Even if you didn't live in a neighborhood, if you lived on Route 7 and you sold 50 cars at a time, are you not automobile sales because you're not impacting the character?
Well, you are definitely automobile sales.
Sorry. I'm just playing devil's advocate here. And, well, I've shared what I've felt before, what character it is. It's, we're all getting away in the profession from addressing that because it's a very tough standard to adjudicate.
Well, I think the gentleman in this, in that case, had the right to sell the cars. He just didn't have the right to sell the cars exactly where he was selling them, in my opinion. I just feel like it, it wasn't impacting the quality of, like, of the people that lived around him. I wouldn't like it.
How many cars can he sell?
Well, and that's the other thing. Do you make him, like, he could say, "No, it was a blue Honda last time." But, you know, like, I mean, how do you factor how many cars?
It's easier than you think.
Is it? When you take pictures?
Can't share my trade secrets.
Well, I'm just saying, there's a lot of slippery ways to get around it if you want. Well, I'm just saying, there's a lot of slippery ways to get around it, if you want to do.
When you run into the dealer license problem, in the state that I use.
Well, Vladimir shared all the ways that you can and can't.
I mean, the state allows you twelve cars in here for sale, before you need to obtain a dealer license, so, I mean, I don't think that, that's unreasonable.
He said he gets around it by registering them.
Yes, so if you register, and then you basically rotate the registration to the next one.
You can sell a hundred in a year.
Yeah, the state doesn't have a problem with it, so...
It's so bizarre.
But, for this, are you trying to make like, a definition of vehicle sales, or, it's kind of like a mixed paragraph, that's the only thing that I add.
So, I'm working off of an existing one, because that's the way, I mean, we could take it out of here if you want, we could put it somewhere else, and not mix them. I was working off the way it's already been, but we could pull it out and put it somewhere else, but the idea is that, once you start selling so many vehicles, you're a business.
Yeah.
And that's why, that's why I left it in this definition, because once you've crossed a certain threshold, you're not just rich, pocketed family selling cars, you're now a business.
Yep.
This, this is not meant to respond to this particular gentleman, but this particular gentleman now has those plate holder things, you know, those little things that go on your license plate, that say, blank blanks, auto sales. He's a business. So, at what point do you cross, I mean, the question to you is, at what point do you cross from normal behavior, car sales, that anybody should be allowed to have at their household, to, you're now a business?
I mean, I don't think the language is bad, because, I mean, honestly, if you're, if you sold five, and you just happened to sell five because it happened, you know, that particular year, whether or not your uncle died, and he had three vehicles that he gave you, and you sold one, and then, whatever, whatever the scenario is, so I don't think it's a, it's gonna be enforced, it's when you're legitimately, more or less, applying it to a business entity that wants to operate as not a business, in residential district. So, I'm, I'm okay with it, it's just, didn't know, it kind of, it doesn't seem like, it's kind of like, almost like a mixed definition and a regulation in one, so...
I mean, I think that's fair, and when I first saw it, I was thinking the same thing, but I think the intention is to...
We're all about the restriction.
Is to sort of say, well, at what point is, is this a business versus not a business?
Especially when you're bringing in people.
But I can look at, I can look at phrasing it in a different location.
Yeah, you can come up with something else, yeah.
What do you guys think of the number? So, this would say...
I just didn't know location.
Well, location is not... Location is not permissible in any residential district, period, so it's already, it's in the A1 table, it's not a, it's not a permissible use in any regulation, and then it goes to a conditional, and it's permissible in a commercial district, so... But it's all, automotive sales are conditional, I think, all the way across the board for that.
Interesting, I didn't know that.
So, you're automatically, so like, that kind of like defines it, that you're becoming a business if you're doing more than three vehicles, therefore, the use is automatically restricted where you're doing it.
So, it becomes commercial.
It becomes, yeah, exactly, so that kind of like limits any more sales than three, without being defined as a business, and therefore, you're being restricted under the zoning regulation on that.
Do you think that needs to be clarified in there somehow?
It feels clear to me, but if it's not clear to you, we can take another look at it.
I didn't know, you just said that, that it's deemed now commercial.
Well, it's, that's what it was.
It's the threshold, so at what point does something become automobile sales use? And I guess I could write that, automobile sales use, would that be more clarifying?
Perhaps, yeah.
Yeah, so automobile sales use is really what this is, so that's the commercial use.
Okay.
Related to automobile sales. I see what you're saying now, yeah. Yeah, so this is the use of automobile sales, the commercial use.
That, that...
Okay, I see where, yeah, I'm following you.
Okay.
I see where it was trippy. So, I'll take a look at that. Yeah, so automobile sales is the use that's in the table as, has a number. I don't think I wrote it in here.
I think that's close, but I'm still gonna have to wait for me.
Okay, yeah, sorry about that.
No, 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 I just wasn't making that connection, so...
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
You can just make a reference to your A1 table.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And that's it, and I call it a day.
Okay. So, knowing that, so the idea is that this is the threshold, which you move beyond normal residential activity, and you become a commercial use.
Four is generous. Four is okay, I mean, three would be...
No, but it says it's three.
Yeah, it's three, right, well, once you hit four, you're done, right?
Yeah, so this says that four is a commercial use.
The average family's not gonna sell, most people don't sell cars anymore on the street.
It's four.
Three cars, the average family.
I just threw a number out there.
Nobody's gonna jump on you, but...
If you guys think it should be different, I'm listening.
Well, if you were saying that the average person, and a much higher level of value...
I don't know how you can determine an average person, I mean, I, yeah, I don't know.
I mean, I keep my cars for a while, I sell one like, every five years.
Some money, right, right?
I'm the wrong person to ask, gonna be, yeah.
Yeah, we're not gonna ask Vladimir. But, you're actually, you're the right person, because you're like, I'm gonna create a business.
Yeah.
Because I know I want to sell more than a couple a year, so you did it.
Yeah.
I think the case that we were looking at, too, it was someone who was admittedly buying cars to sell, like, it was...
Yeah, they wanted a business and skirt the rules.
Yeah.
That, that I get.
Yeah, I mean, he never made a claim that this is just, no, I don't drive it anymore, I'm selling it, he's like, no, I buy them at an auction, and I resell them to make money.
Yeah.
A supplemental...
Yeah.
Right. I mean, I don't know what the right number is, so I'm kind of hoping, if anybody feels differently, let me know.
The state does say twelve, I think that, I think you're gonna get pushed back with that, I know, but it's like, realistically...
I thought it was ten, it's twelve?
It's twelve vehicles.
Where did you get? Three. Did you make that?
I made it up, it just feels like, I've never known anyone who has sold more than three cars in a year.
We, we can, we can regulate what we want, we don't care if the state says twelve.
You want to say one, you want to say fifty-eight?
That's right.
You say whatever you want.
Okay with three or four, either way.
It's your number.
I don't like, I just don't see after that, you've got people coming, especially in neighborhood.
Yeah.
It's bad enough on the main road, have people pulling off and going in, but, you get them coming into a neighborhood, you've got a lot of different individuals rolling through.
People turning around and bumping these driveways.
Shouldn't be there.
Traffic, yeah.
I mean, I don't know, I mean, you, you know more people than I do, like, do you know people who turn cars over a lot, or just their family?
Not, not as a residential thing, no. I mean, we, I grew up on a main road, so we would have cars out there, I bet we had a car every month for a long time, but that was a thing.
Yeah, because you had the property for it.
Uncle's friends, whatever, because we had the right location, but then there came a time when we stopped it, because there was people coming that we didn't want coming anymore, so, you know, there's a lot of strangers.
Because it does draw in people.
It definitely brings in people, and you get people in the middle of the night that will show up, and their excuse is, we're looking at a car, I mean, it's the real deal now, so, I'm okay with, I mean, if nothing else, it helps out a neighborhood, I'm good with that, too. I think our neighborhoods could use less people wandering around, shouldn't be there.
Like I said, unless it's, you know, my, my thing is just keeping the zoning clean, you know, keeping it out of residential, or, if you want to add something regarding residential districts, you know what I mean, so that way, it's not as blatant that you can't do it, because if you have a business that's permitted as a business, where automotive sales are permitted, and you have the, the parking for it, and the facility for it, and it's well-lit, and safe, and whatever else, I mean, I don't think that, that should be restrictive, you know what I mean, to that entity, just because they don't have a car sale license, but I think that if you add something like residential district in there, that would clearly mark, you know what I mean, the, what the, what the problem we're addressing, because it's like, I think this can limit an entire town, you know what I mean, the way that it's written, but if it's a permissible, if we're trying to restrict it in a residential district, I think it should state that, you know, that we're limiting residential districts for it.
I could be more blunt about it, yeah.
So...
Yeah, I could do that.
So, yeah.
Moving on. All right. This one, this one's been on my list for a while, too, and I was reminded of it recently. I don't have all the answers for this one yet, but I've got a lot of ideas, I just have to get them on paper. Okay, so, right now, when you have a multi-tenant property, or you have a single property that has a tenant that changes, even if it's the same use, so you are a daycare, the daycare leaves, and a new daycare comes in, chappens? Or you're a retail use, retail leaves, new retail comes in. You think it's just a matter of changing your sign, it's not, it's a process. It's actually kind of a long process. We get a lot of feedback about it, we get a lot of hate about it, I don't blame people, especially when you are the property owner, and they're just trying to fill a vacant space, and we want vacant spaces to be filled for so many reasons. If you've got a vacant space, and it takes four months to put somebody new in there just for paperwork purposes, they're probably gonna go somewhere else, and we're seeing it happen. So, I'm trying to work through how to make this simpler, and I've got a lot of ideas, I think they're good ideas. The devil's in the details with the paper, with the text. So, what do we look at? Why, what, what's slowing us down right now? So, when we have, especially a multi-tenant building, so let's just pick any old strip mall in town.
Can I just clarify one thing? When you say a tenant, is that another business?
Sometimes it can be a very different business, or the same business.
But it's not like a tenant, like a person, like in an apartment?
No, like the business, yeah.
Okay, just wondering.
Yeah.
That's what I was on, Prim Road.
Which one?
The Prim Road one.
Oh, yeah, let's pick that one, you mean the one right at the corner across from Rozzy's?
Yep.
Yeah, let's pick that one, does it have a name?
Prim Road.
Prim Road, okay. Prim Road, strip mall.
That was Bay Harbor.
Bay Harbor?
Or is that the building next door?
It's Bay Harbor now, we're calling it Bay Harbor.
There you go.
So, the Bay Harbor one, so there's a, there's a couple tenants, right? There's a nail salon, I think, Energy Co-op of Vermont or something's in there, so there's general office, a nail salon, a daycare, I think there's a...
Karate studio.
Karate studio. So, there's a couple different uses going on in there, right? So, a couple things going on in there, and let's just pretend, the nail salon leaves, right? Sorry, Serena, okay, nail salon stays, Energy Co-op leaves. Energy Co-op leaves, they're going to a bigger space, because they're so successful, how's that?
My words.
So, so that general office, so that general office space is open, right? And now, hair salon wants to go in there. We've now got to say, okay, do you have enough parking, dear hair salon? Do you have enough wastewater, dear hair salon? Are there gonna be any additional traffic impacts, dear hair salon? And you need to go to the board, because a hair salon might be a conditional use. It's six months before they get a permit to put said hair salon in there. But the practicality of it, for all of you who are familiar with that plaza, is, yeah, a hair salon's probably gonna generate a few more cars than the Energy Co-op. I'm making that up, I don't know, I think it's something like that that's in there. Probably gonna generate a few more cars. They'll find a way to park, I really believe they will. I don't think they're gonna be suddenly like, converging on Rozzy's, or the, you know, environmental, the boat launching place across the street. I don't think they're gonna tip the scales on the traffic, on the intersection there, because there's four extra cars. Yeah, they need a wastewater permit, but that's the state's problem, not mine. So, why are, why is this taking us so many months? So, I think there's things we can do, if you want me to pursue this, and there's a couple of them, did I write them here? Ah, yeah, where we can do this. So, first of all, changes in occupants would be permitted, so if you already have an approval, multi-tenant permit, if you're, if the board has already given an approval to something, if, let's just say, sorry, Serena, the nail salon is going out, nail salon is a high-impact use for parking and stuff, they have a high draw, and that's gonna become a general office. The board's already approved the higher need, they shouldn't have to go back to the board, they've already said there's plenty of parking, what's coming in is gonna be less. Basic zoning permit and done, is what I would propose. So, it would be automatically approved with a basic zoning permit, no different than getting a permit for a fence. For new properties, or for those which seek to increase, it could potentially have to go to the board, but the property owner up front could say, look, here's what I want to do, here's the most intense stuff that I could possibly put in here, if this entire thing was a hair salon, which is like, the most trip ends, because there's a lot of turnover, that's why. This is all the parking I'm gonna need, this is all that's possibly gonna come out of this, give me approval for that, and then I can change tenants at will, because nothing's gonna need more, let me get that umbrella up front that covers, get it? The umbrella covers everything? Up front, and don't make me come back. So, they could do that. So, yeah, it does take a little bit of time up front when we first start this, but once you get it, it's like your ticket to ride. Option three, which I haven't outlined here, probably falls under the parking standards that I'm also working on, is that we stop being so fussy about the difference between a parking salon, parking salon, between a hair salon and a taekwondo studio. Our regs might say that a hair salon needs five parking spaces, and a taekwondo studio needs three. Maybe we just say, the average parking that a strip mall needs is four, and we don't really care if the tenants change over. All strip malls need four parking spaces per thousand square feet. Pick an average number up front, we permit it, and we stop fussing.
Are you just thinking...
That's radical, but I tend to get that way.
Are you thinking of customers only, or are you thinking of people who work at...
So, everything is done differently, if you look at our chart for, I'll just choose parking, because what we look at for cumulative use is parking, wastewater, and traffic impacts. And traffic impacts are only for really large things, if they're gonna trigger intersection So, parking's the big one. Wastewater's now a state issue, we might tell someone they have to go prove that they can get wastewater, but they don't actually get those permits from us, unless they're on, unless they're on town sewer, I take that back. So, if you're at like, Exit Sixteen, Water Tower Hill, stuff like that, that's on town So, they're all calculated differently, so a hair salon is gonna be based on, and this is why it gets so tricky, a hair salon is gonna be based on the number of seats slash stations, so if you have four sinks, four seats, that's gonna need so much, so it's not based on the size of the space, it's how many customers you serve. A daycare is gonna be based on how many employees... A daycare is going to be based on how many employees and children you can serve. And so if a daycare suddenly gets, you know, they change from having more infants, and there's less people, or they're like, "We're not doing infants anymore." The ratios are too terrible, we don't make enough money. We're going to do age three and up, it's preschool now. They suddenly need more parking because the ratios for three-year-olds are like six per teacher instead of three per teacher. Do you know what I mean? So it gets really complicated. And we have to deal with that, and that's why I think the regulation was put in place to start with, when you change a daycare to a daycare. Because if you're being really picky, not all daycares are created equal. One daycare might have 14 employees, the next might have nine. And if we're calculating parking needs based on number of employees, one needs five more parking spaces than the other. So you best bet that they need to scratch out five parking spaces, because they got too many. Or they have to add five, because they don't have enough. But the reality is, there's probably enough out there.
The kids aren't driving.
The kids aren't driving.
Kids are all wild.
Yeah. And daycare turns over fast. When you start counting by kids, parents are in and out of there in under five minutes. And the number of teachers you have is always changing, and nobody ever comes back once they get their initial approval. So, one radical idea is that you do just take a space up front, and you stop fussing about how many teachers and how many sinks are in every hair salon, and how many, um, you know, however else we're measuring everything else. And you just say, "Here's an average." And for some uses, it'll be higher, and some it'll be lower, but you say, "Here's an average," and we're making it easy on you, at least. And if you end up putting all general office in there, which needs nothing, and we've given you a higher average, well, sorry. But the day that you have all short-order restaurants, boy, you're lucky.
I like it.
Now, I'm moving really towards deregulation.
Yep.
Honestly, I just think it's costing us too much money.
It's the closest I've ever brought you towards deregulation.
Lemon, like you said, what makes sense.
I'm not saying throw out parking regulations, I'm just saying, we don't need to nitpick.
And I think, like, somebody owns a building who's moving tenants, so the tenants aren't going to move in, or there's going to be like a discussion with the, who's going to live in a tiny, tiny parking place if they're not available?
Yeah.
I just think it's something you deal with on that level, as opposed to outstanding, maybe five months, everything, you know, it's just... And we need businesses in Colchester, so move them in.
Let's make it easy.
And it's not always perfect. Yeah, I've been doing this for like 25 years now, 21 in Vermont. We did, you know, when I was in South Burlington, there was actually a whole section of town where we said there were no parking requirements. Talk about radical, zero. No, you can, if you have them, you want them, go ahead, but there's zero requirement. And it, and it worked in like 90% of, probably 95% of the lots that were in that district. It's not to say it was perfect, there were a few where there was like a dermatologist, where they simply, they put in like eight spots, and they had 10 employees. Like, where were the customers going? It didn't work out great. But you can bet that the owner of that place figured it out. You know, they incentivized, you know, if you carpool, or take the bus to work, or we're going to give you, like, they were giving serious money, actually, to their employees, if they did not drive to work, or they parked someplace else that did not get complaints, and walked, or biked, or did something.
And then you go into like, you know, the strip mall that was paying kind of Costco, that's got the e-strikes and stuff, they designate parking for that business only.
Oh, yeah, I hate that.
I know. But I can understand why they would do that.
This would only work if you did not allow that, because you have to share. You have to be able to share, because you have to be flexible. Because if you, you can't have vacant spots. You have to be able to take advantage of empty ones. That's the only way you can do this. I think. If it's all in the same plaza. You know, obviously, if you're the neighbor next door, and you've got, you know, if, in our example, you're Rozzy's, and all of a sudden, um, it's going gangbusters next door, and there's not enough, and you're starting to notice people, then Rozzy's, of course, could put up signs saying, "We'll tow." But if you open up, you know, a Starbucks there, and all of a sudden, everybody's coming, you can't say, and you're the taekwondo studio, and you're open three hours a day, you can't be leaving those spaces empty for your taekwondo studio all morning long. Because where are those Starbucks customers parking?
So to do this, you can't have designated?
No.
Okay.
Yeah.
Which works. Here, e-strikes, you don't like it, don't go there. Somebody else will pull in. But it's less hassle for us, it gives you a lot more open opportunities.
More often than not, people are over-parking, not under-parking. You know, I challenge you, next time you're out and about, driving around someplace, you will find way more places of business that have more than half their parking lots empty than places that don't have enough parking. And even places that don't feel like they have enough parking, always have enough parking. I've never, ever left Costco, and not been able to find a, and that place feels like there's not enough parking. I've always been able to park my car. So even places that feel like they don't have enough, still have enough. Most of the time. At least places that are not in a downtown, I would say. Didn't have a great experience in Winuski on Friday, but that's a different story. Does it all sound worth pursuing?
Sure.
Yeah, there's like a theme here, kind of being a little more business-friendly. Stuff that I've been kicking around for a while. All right. Sorry, guys. ADUs. Uh, I won't get into it too much, because I know Rebecca, we'll save some of this. I know Rebecca was really into this one, and she's not here. But as a reminder, we talked a lot about this. Uh, we went round and round about it, had a great, robust discussion about ADUs. So, um, ADUs are mostly defined, there's not a lot of work to do. What was undone was, okay, state law, and actually, our regulation, I realize, does not match state law. I was looking at the state law again, and I was like, oh, we don't match. Um, so state law actually does say, um, we're having this conversation, if you look here, under 24 VSA 4303, it says, "The unit does not exceed 30% of the habitable floor area." Remember, we were talking about like, oh, 30% of what? What is it? What is it? What is it? Statute says habitable floor area. Doesn't define anywhere in statute what habitable means, but it at least uses the word. So we have something to work from. Habitable floor area. Now, again, this is not going to come into play that much, because 900 square feet is a pretty big base to start with. But there are some pretty big properties, especially big properties with really large garages, or barns, or something, where they're like, "Let's count all of this, and then we're going to get up to an ADU that's like 4,000, 5,000 square feet." And that's what we're talking about here. Which far exceeds, you know, the state is trying to get you at least 900, not 5,000. So habitable, so that I'm like, all right, the state doesn't define habitable, maybe we should. Uh, that's just more state law, that's what our current regs are. I talked a lot here, you've all read it. That's me fixing the regs, because it used to be that ADUs existed only in one section of statute, now it's been split into two, so I changed the reference there. Changed it to match the reg there, so 30% of total habitable floor area, so that's what you're seeing. And then I broke it down, because the language was also sort of weird, about what's counted as what. So I, I broke it down into, what do you get to count as your base calculation? And what gets counted as the resulting? Because some people are like, "Oh, here's my ADU, but it has a deck." Does the deck count? Does it, it has a three-season porch, does that count as part of my ADU? And let's just be clear, I mean, I don't really care, you guys tell me what you want to account, I just want it to be clear, because it's a goal tonight. But here's something for you to respond to. So, included in the base calculation, again, we're going to circle back to this when Rebecca's here. Shall be all habitable areas. I'm defining, keeping it simple here, habitable areas, finished space. Finished space is already defined in our regulations. Finished space comes from the tax assessor, actually. So we use finished space in Chapter Four, which is our building code. We mostly use it because we have a different fee for finished space versus unfinished space, and finished basement as to whether or not it needs egress windows. But the tax assessor defines finished space, um, basically as having three of four components, flooring, wall cover, ceiling, and heat. So, this would say that any space that has those things, you get to count in your what you're taking your 30% of. You can noodle on that for a while, if you want. Because then we were like, and I still didn't know if it's right, but it's something to start with, because you were like, "What about a garage? Do you get to count that?" And then it's like, all right, what is the purpose of the 30%? Is it so that you don't have a massive second building that dwarfs the first building? What if it's an attached garage, but it looks like it's part of the first one? But what if it's a detached, and then you have three structures, or five structures on the property, and...
Are short-term rentals, are ADUs allowed to be short-term rentals? I was, they are?
Anything can be a short-term rental, we don't regulate them in Colchester. It's not my call.
Only justice can be initiated when they like could be regulated.
VLCT is holding a training on short-term rentals November 8th, if you're interested, I can send you. VLCT? They're holding a retreat, they're calling it, November 8th, on short-term rental regulations.
There you go.
Saturday?
I don't remember.
Probably not, it's like a whole day at Lake Maury. So it's kind of far. I don't know. I haven't decided. But if you're interested in it, I could send you the stuff. So something to noodle on, like I said, we'll come back, because I know Rebecca was really interested in this. Let me know if this is really far off, if it's helpful. So this would basically probably allow a lot of finished basements to count. As far as the garages go, flooring, so flooring, um, generally like, flooring is like real flooring, not like concrete. That does not count as flooring for the assessor, just to be clear, so that probably wouldn't meet finished for the assessor. So most garages probably would not need this, but they might have the wall cover, ceiling, and heat. And you only need three of four. So keep that in mind. I think most of you, the last time we talked about this, were kind of fine with garages, especially if it's like part of the house, because it's like, here's the whole house, and something that's 30% of that is kind of fine. But like, when you start getting into like detached barns, and whole separate, separate structures, I think was where you were.
Yep.
You start adding separate structures, even if they were a garage or something. That's what I recall from the conversation.
It is attached, right?
This doesn't speak to attached versus detached, but you could.
Okay.
At least as far as what you're calculating from. You can't require an ADU to be attached or detached. They could be either.
Is there, uh, it's got to be setbacks, but is there a lot of coverage also that might restrict an ADU as well?
Yeah, I mean, all those things have to be met.
Yeah.
Though honestly, if I was attached, probably make something a duplex before I'd make it an ADU.
That's the other question, can we have an ADU with a duplex, provided it's not restricted with like a PUD regulation?
Not right now. I think it's a matter of years before the legislature allows it, but right now, duplexes cannot have an ADU. They could only be associated with single-unit dwellings. Actually, I say that, that's what state law requires. You are allowed to be more permissive than state law if you want. If you guys decide that you want duplexes to have ADUs, you can do that. I haven't even brought that up, because it's a whole other ball. I'm not going there.
That's what the facts are like.
But you, you are allowed to be more, and I think I've heard of somebody doing that. Essex? Heinsberg? Somebody allows ADUs associated with duplexes. I can't remember who. But they have additional caveats in place, like, I can't remember what they are, but... Yeah, I mean, that's part of the challenge, right? Because you still have to be owner-occupied. That's part of the state law, so you'd still have a limited use of them, but some people live in the duplex, or they want to live in the ADU, and rent out the duplex. That's probably more likely, actually. Somebody would live in the detached ADU. All right. Noodle on that. I just wanted to give you language, parking standards. Nope, next time. But I did talk to you a little bit about what I was thinking there, about maybe shop, shopping mall use, or, I say strip mall, but I'll call it shopping mall, or office building use. There are office buildings, for example, I say shopping mall, but it doesn't have to be a strip mall style, it could be multiple tenants in like a different layout. The other thing, um, that's long bugged me about our parking standards, is that we have a max. You cannot, in our PUD standards, you cannot provide more than 10% than what is required. Which does, maybe sounds like a lot, if you are required to have... Which does, maybe sounds like a lot, if you are required to have 100, you can't provide more than 110, alright, 10 extra doesn't sound so bad. But if you're required to have 10 and you already have 15 on site, no joke, we're going to make you remove four. I'm not proud of it. But that's what the regulation says. You cannot have more than 10%. I think, you know, I, it was a lofty, good goal, I think it had the right intentions, bad execution. It was so that we weren't over parking. Sometimes, sometimes the DRB will let people just take paint. And like, leave the asphalt, but paint over the yellow stripes. That's, they just have to put back again when the tenant changes. And that's all completely reliant on the gasometer being right. That a hair salon needs four spaces per thousand. And if they don't, yeah, so I'll be doing a lot of work on these because that 10%, especially for, maybe it's great for certain things, you don't want people providing huge parking lots. But in my experience, the only time I've ever seen anyone attempt to provide a lot more than they were required to is usually medical office. Most people don't otherwise. I took back a look at like the Shaws, for example. Big parking lot, hardly ever anyone in it. They didn't overpark. Pretty much what they were required to have. Yeah. So part of it is, is just allowing more flexibility. And I think you have to provide, you have to provide at least 66% of what is required. At least. And the board cannot waive any more than that, so if you come in and you're like, wow, this is saying I need 400 parking spaces and I know we're not going to come close to that, I can show you all the examples in the world. Board has no choice, they are going to say you need to at least show 66%. And I think you have to demonstrate that you can meet 100% somewhere. So we have a lot of work to do on, on these because if ever there's a place to deregulate, it's here. Which is not very flexible.
Sounds good so far. Any questions on that one? Good.
Does anybody else have questions or? I feel like I talked a lot.
That's alright. It's a lot there today. Anything that helps out right now for businesses is a good thing.
That's all I got for, for that.
Alright, I'm gonna move on. Alright. Good, now we need a motion for the minutes of September 2nd. Need a second? Need a second? Alright, all in favor? Alright, there you go, motion passes.
Can I ask one thing? Just let the minister real quickly. Just, are we going to have before the, we start working on the plan, are we going to have another economic development report come in at all on Colchester? I mean, I think the last one was 2018, I mean, 2018.
I don't believe there will be a specific economic development report. But we will be putting in an effort for all of the chapters for the people who are most versed in them to be the starting authors of them. So for example, I'll be working with the superintendent of schools to take a look at the education chapter. I'm not going to write it. Pretend I know anything about Colchester's education. Emergency services, I will be asking them to really put some thought into what's said there, and the same thing for economic development. There are some that I will have to take on because there is no expert. There's really not a good energy, you know, and so there's a lot that planning and zoning will be taking on, but, but certainly where there are other people of expertise. We'll be doing our best in the time that we have to, to include them and, and really have them lead.
I just really liked the 2000, when I read it, the 2018, because it was a much broader, it was looking at Chinatown, it wasn't looking really at Colchester. But it was talking about how Colchester could attract more economic development.
Who did that? Who did it?
I don't know, some agent, you know, some agency was, you know, was paid for, the town paid for it to have an expert come in and do an econo- I just do wonder if it would be helpful here to have that perspective. You know, in knowing trends and what's happening outside of Vermont and demographics and, because I think it's a really important piece of that report to, you know, that other areas depend on to make, to inform decision-making. So, I mean, I'm just putting in a plug, I, I think it would be about time that we have that done.
I mean, we'll certainly look at it, I don't think we'll, we'll have the time or the funding to do a whole new plan. But maybe we can look at people who were involved in it and see if they'll participate again. Just for that, like targeted. I'll take a look.
Okay.
Alright. Future meeting schedule.
Oh, did you guys vote on minutes?
Yes. We're all good.
Who was?
One and two.
One and two?
Yep.
I haven't did everything by memory.
I saw that.
You'll trust me, right? Actually, I'm going to go watch the video, that's what I'm going to do. The minutes are all going to come from the video later. Okay, future meeting schedule, so reminder, you have a meeting in two weeks. Town plan is the topic. That rolls right into B. Okay. Town plan.
It rolls right into?
To B on here, town plan update.
Oh, right, okay, sorry.
So, kicking off, kicking off, and we're kicking off fast. Saturday. You're not doing anything, even if you are, cancel it. Saturday is the fall market. I've seen Sarita at the fall market. I think Rich's wife, Mrs. Paquette.
Oh, she's going to be there. Been informed.
Did you notice what my time slot was at all? Is it Francis from the Rotary that?
I don't know.
I don't know.
I don't know. Are you, you're tabling? Are you tabling there? I don't know, I'm not in charge of that part of it, but fall market, so we started the fall market just as a, as part of our growth center requirement five years ago, four years ago. We used to do it out on the town green and it was part of, because the town owns the gazebo, if you don't know this, and the town green. It's no longer a requirement of a growth center anymore, but we, people loved it, so we want to keep it up. We're going to move it to the rec center this year. So it'll be indoors, it'll be at the rec center on Saturday from 10 to 3.
This Saturday.
This Saturday. I'm there because I'm always there because it was a, I'm just staying involved even though it used to be part of a planning and zoning requirement because of the town growth center. But also be tabling for the town plan. So we'll have a booth, planning and zoning will have a booth as well. To table for the town plan, we're going to have some fun little questions, we'll ask people, start kicking off thoughts on future of Colchester, et cetera, et cetera. And Rich knows this. Marketing is important, I love marketing. So we started some ideas about how to market the plan. Give it a catchy little name. I like catchy little names. So we came up with about, I don't know, seven or eight of them? Put them in a little spreadsheet and sent them out to a couple of select board members, a couple of people from the planning commission, a couple of people in administration, had people vote on them. I was a little surprised, there were a few names that people gave zeros to, it was like zero to 10, we're going to, this is quantitative. And we're going to average them out and see who gets, gets the highest score. I can't believe there were some zeros, did you give any zeros?
No, I figured somebody came up with a name while I was playing, I put a two.
If you hated it, you give it a two. So, yeah, so marketing, we, so we have a, a name for our marketing. And then I've been working on logos. And I just finished these today, I haven't turned them into anything. So I thought I'd bring them to you. Well, I have two different versions, they're not very different from each other, but I was playing with little graphics at the bottom. So you can pass these around. They're only slightly different. So that's what I was all excited about this morning.
Are you going to have like regional maps of the environment or?
No, we're not getting that deep to start with, this is going to be very simple, we're going to be like, I'm going to have like an easel pad with some, a question that says something like, what's one word that comes to mind, first word that comes to mind when you think of Colchester? So these are very simple, quick, you know, so this tells you a lot about like, what's on people's mind? Is it recreation, is it? Is it environment, is it the economy, is it housing, is it affordability, like, is it people, is it schools, like what's coming to mind? So that, that's what, like, we're going to do exercises like that. Do you like my little logo? Isn't it cute? It's a book. It's a book. Get it? It's a plan. Okay, we should probably share it with you.
I like the one with the little buildings on the bottom.
Do you like the, that's why I made it cute, you like the ones with the pictures?
With the little bottom, I do.
I do, I like that.
So Lake and Land. Is the, is the catchy little Lake and Land, Colchester Town, 2017, 2027, Colchester Town Plan. I should have put it up on here, I didn't bring a digital version. Yeah, and I got the Colchester, do you see the little Colchester logo, it's like the setting sun?
I love it.
It's like our logo. So I made a book. Do you like it? Do you approve? Can I go with it?
Yes.
I haven't sent it out anywhere, you're the first people to see it.
Would you like us to vote on it?
If only that's something to compare it to, to vote against, like you have no choice, you're, you're getting it, but I wanted to make sure you liked it.
I love it. I think it's great.
Yeah, some other ideas, we had a really like charting Colchester's course or something, I think that was like the second, that came in second. Little play on words there with like the lake thing and connecting Colchester, I think was up there. I got some zeros. Yeah.
Understandable. Especially for the older people when you want it 2050.
I know, I know, I'm sorry.
2050 is way out there for the older ones.
So yeah, we're going to kick that off. Are you guys going to come?
Yeah, I am.
Stop by. I might just leave you in the booth and walk away and you can talk to people.
I can stop by, I can, I can man the booth here to answer any questions.
Zach will be there for a little bit, because I'll be, I have other duties that day too.
I'll stop by after then at the I think it might be a two hour shift.
Yeah. It'll be fun, and hopefully we'll hear from people. Obviously, people come who are not from Colchester, but hopefully we can hear from people from Colchester to see, so if you guys have any ideas, the things you want to hear, we're going to do some fun things, I'm going to give away some chocolate some other fun things. It'll be fun.
So the point is to entice people to come?
To entice people, just to get them excited about it because as much fun as it is working with you guys, writing this plan, the more people we get out, the better. Plan is really, we always tell people in between, we're like, how many times have you said it, Rich, like, when people want changes, we're like, come when we write the plan, come when we write the plan.
It's your turn.
We got to get them, we got to get them out. And we'll talk about that in two weeks. A big thing we're going to be talking about is schedule. We'll talk about locations for public meetings. We'll talk about themes. I'll give you a little bit of an update, we're working with an intern out of UVM who's doing a great job on some work, so I'll have an update on some of the research she's been doing. So that's what we'll have on the agenda for two weeks from now.
You do outreach to people, letting them know that this is their opportunity to provide input, you know, into the future of Colchester.
Yeah.
It's not like when we're putting up something, all of a sudden it's like 20 people that like didn't know.
And that's why we're trying to like really market, like, and make it kind of cute and fun because we're going to be doing postcards, we're going to be doing a website. We want it to be as accessible as possible. Part of the work that the intern is doing is doing research methods on how to connect with people who don't go to meetings. We want people to come, we want people to talk, I mean, that's still important because it has to be a conversation. But we still want people to feel like they can share things even if they can't come. And there's, I don't know, I can't keep up, there's new stuff all the time. And so it's great to have somebody who's 20 and more connected with digital audiences than I am.
And social media.
Yeah.
You know, it should be, I think, in the town managers report, you know, that this is going to be happening and we really want public input.
Yeah. So we're going to be hitting that heavy because I think everybody agrees that like transparency and invitation are critical, and I've heard you guys say it for years and we're sincere and genuine about it and want to make sure we're putting our money where our mouth is on that and we also have some requirements under state law to meet environmental justice goals. So to reach out to typically underrepresented populations or populations that don't typically participate as much. So we'll be doing that, making sure that we are meeting, you know, meeting the requirements there and whatever we need to do there. People who have experience in reaching those populations hopefully will help us with some tips. Let's plan. More about it in two weeks.
Perfect, good job. Next. Monthly reports.
Yeah, usually I don't get them to you because we meet so early in the month. But this is, this is the last possible day on the first week. You have one.
Alright, we're all set. We're happy to report. We need a motion.
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
All in favor? Aye. We are adjourned.
That was a fun one. That was a fun one.